We will call to order the North Olmsted Board of Education meeting for Wednesday evening, December 16th, 2020, and I would ask our Treasurer, Mrs. Hennessy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Hall?
Here, virtually.
Mr. Herbster? Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mrs. Rahm?
Here.
Mr. Gordon?
Here. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting on this cold and snowy evening in North Olmsted. We have a little bit of a different agenda in that there is something that I want to take care of right at the top of the meeting, and that is a resolution before the Board regarding the ability to meet by electronic means. So if you would just bear with me one moment. So the first thing that I wanted to take care of, since the General Assembly and the Governor's Office updated some legislation that allows the Board to meet in the manner that we are meeting, there is a resolution before the Board to continue conducting Board of Board meetings via electronic means during the COVID-19 state of emergency in accordance with House Bill 404. And if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to take this mask off for a second. As far as the resolution goes, I just want to, in the interest of time, and just to get to the heart of the matter, for public consumption, just read the "therefore" sections, because that's really what we're talking about. Be it resolved that pursuant to House Bill 97 and House Bill 404, the Board shall carry out its meetings either by a combination of in-person attendance with appropriate social distancing and safety precautions to the extent possible, paired with electronic attendance or solely by the electronic means set forth in the emergency provisions for the duration of the exigent circumstances created by the COVID-19 outbreak, but not beyond July 21st or July 1st, 2021. Be it further resolved, the Board hereby reaffirms the amendments to the relevant provisions of its policy 0169.1, public participation at Board meetings, that allow for public participation at open meetings solely by the electronic means as set forth in the emergency provisions for the duration of the exigent circumstances created by the COVID-19 outbreak, but not beyond July 1st, 2021. Be it further resolved, the Board hereby reaffirms the suspension of relevant provisions of its policy 0167, voting with regard to in-person voting requirements and relevant portions of its policy 0131, legislative with regard to physical presence requirements and other Board policies and procedures in conflict with the provisions of House Bill 197 and House Bill 404 for purposes of compliance with OMA for the duration of the applicability of such emergency provisions, but not beyond July 1st, 2021. Be it further resolved, the Board President, the Superintendent, or his designee and/or Treasurer are authorized and directed to take all other such actions as are necessary or appropriate to accomplish the objectives of this resolution. Be it further resolved that it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an electronic meeting of this Board in full compliance with the provisions of House Bill 197 and House Bill 404, and that all deliberations of this Board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action took place in a meeting open to the public by electronic means or in executive session as permitted by Ohio law. Lastly, it's further resolved that this resolution shall be applied retroactively to December 1st, 2020, and the Board hereby ratifies all prior action of District Administration in this regard taken from that date through the date of this resolution. So at this time, I move that the resolution of the Board to continue conducting Board meetings via electronic means during the COVID-19 state of emergency in accordance with House Bill 404, and I ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I have made the motion. It has been seconded by Mr. Hall. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. Mrs. Hennessy, would you call the roll? Yes.
I'll say yes. I think you're muted, so I'm not sure.
Thank you. Good. Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Herbster? Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mrs. Rahm?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all, and thank you for that bit of housekeeping that we needed to take care of at this time, especially for anybody who might be tuned into our meeting for the first time in these COVID-19 days and seeing how we conduct these meetings at this time. I do have a few more announcements. There will be two opportunities for public participation during the meeting, and you can do that by sending an email to questions@nolmstead.org. That is questions with an S at the end, @nolmstead.org. Questions or comments submitted to that email address will be read aloud during the meeting. By Board Policy 0169.1, each participant will be limited to no more than three minutes, and the total time for public participation shall not exceed 30 minutes. As always, community members can communicate with Board members by email or phone. Board member contact information can be found on the District website. We will be monitoring the Internet connection throughout the meeting. If we determine the connection has been generally lost or dropped or becomes inaudible, the meeting will be temporarily suspended until those issues are corrected, and the minutes of the meeting will identify whether each Board member attended in person or by electronic means. Having said that, we will move to the next item on the agenda, and that is the approval of the minutes. I would ask if there is a motion to approve the minutes from the work session on November 5th and the regular Board meeting on November 18th?
So moved.
The motion has been made by Mr. Herbster. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Rahm. Thank you both. Any discussion? Questions? Very good. Mrs. Hennessy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mrs. Rahm?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you all. Before I turn the meeting over to Dr. Zoller for special announcements, the agenda section that follows those special announcements is the first opportunity for public participation. That will be public participation regarding matters that are on tonight's agenda. If you have any questions or comments about matters on the agenda tonight, you can send an email to questions@nolmstead.org. Dr. Zoller, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you at this time for special announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon, and welcome, members of the Board of Education, and also welcome members of our community that are tuning in tonight via Facebook Live. I do have just a couple of special announcements that I want to share at this time. First of all, I'd like to recognize and congratulate Dr. Wadad Musa, who has been selected to receive the Partners in Education Teacher of the Month Award that is offered by the Ohio Lottery. Partners in Education Teacher of the Month Award Program recognizes outstanding K-12 teachers for their excellence in the classroom, leadership, creativity, and community involvement, as well as dedication on behalf of Ohio students. Dr. Musa was nominated by Dr. Donna Villarreal, who works at the Lau Resource Center for English Learners at the Ohio Department of Education. Dr. Musa teaches English, Arabic, and coordinates the World Languages and Cultures Department at the high school. So certainly want to congratulate Dr. Musa for just continued excellence in a job well done that she's been doing for many, many years. Very proud of her. Also want to congratulate one of our students, Amani Lezior, who is a seventh grader at the middle school. Amani participated in the Horizons Bus Design Contest, and she won. Her bus design, which has actually come to life on a Horizon bus, features colorful dragons. She received a gift card and her name on the Horizon bus. So be on the lookout for Amani's bus design as you are driving around North Olmsted this winter season. Also want to congratulate or remind that the District continues to offer grab-and-go meals. The deadline to order grab-and-go meals has changed to Thursdays at 11:00 p.m. This change will provide additional time for our families to place their meal orders for Friday pickups. And I believe, Mr. Gordon, you have some information you want to share in terms of a thanks about the Kiwanis. I'll allow you to do that, and then maybe I'll come back and fill in some details on that. But we certainly want to thank and recognize our local North Olmsted Kiwanis Club for some supplies that they've been providing to some families in the District during this holiday season. So with that, I'll conclude our announcements at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zoller, and congratulations to Amani for the bus design and for Doc... Congratulations to Dr. Musa on that recognition. That's terrific. Did anybody have any questions for Dr. Zoller about the announcements? Okay. In that case, let me check the inbox to see if we have any public participation regarding matters on tonight's agenda. If you give me one moment. I do see a question, but it does not appear to be related to the agenda this evening. So we will come back to that question later in the meeting during public participation regarding matters that are not on tonight's agenda. In that case, that brings us to Agenda Item Number Six, the Reports and Recommendations of the Treasurer, and I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Hennessy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. Good evening, Board of Education and community members who are viewing. Just a few things that we are working on in the office. It's the end of the year time, so we are working on payroll, end-of-the-year reporting, getting preparation for W-2 reporting. We're finalizing the open enrollment process for our employees that will conclude at the end of this week, which includes insurance and FSA independent care enrollment. The coronavirus spending concludes at the end of this month, so we're finalizing that, making sure that all the invoices are paid so that we can do the final expenditure reporting with the state. And then we are finalizing the report for our CAFR submission with our audit firm, and then preparing the tax budget, which I'll approve next month. And then we've had some meetings district-wide for some automation movement towards automation, and then there have been some legislation movements, which I know, Mr. Gordon, you have an update, I believe, later in committee reports that are in direct result of the Fair Funding Plan and have some treasurer licensure possibility implications. And... So I think that that's everything that I wanted to update you on that. And so on the agenda this evening are the financial reports for November, the bond payments, debt service payments were due in November, so you would see those payments. They're pretty substantial, so I wanted to make sure that you knew that, that those were made. And then routine are the request for you to approve me to be able to request the 2021 advances from the county auditor for our taxes, tax revenue. And then there's some amendments to the 21 appropriations. And then there are donations. There were some office chairs and word cubes donated to Birch. There were some funds donated to Spruce for Jim Basketball Jones, and Household Essentials donated to Birch Primary. And then, as Dr. Zoller had mentioned, the Kiwanis Club made a very nice donation that allowed every student K through 12 in the school district to receive a box of crayons and at least two dry erase markers. So that is everything I have this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hennessy. Is there a motion to approve the recommendations of the Treasurer found in Items 6A through 6D?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Hall. Thank you. Before I ask the Board if they have any questions or comments about the recommendations of the Treasurer, for anyone who might be joining us for the first time and seeing this process work out, I would just state that we are working right now within the consent agenda. It's the part of the agenda called the consent part of the agenda. The recommendations of the Treasurer and also of the Superintendent were supplied to School Board members ahead of tonight's meeting to give us time to review all the material and ask any questions before tonight if we needed to. But that certainly doesn't preclude anybody from asking any questions tonight. So are there any questions or comments about the recommendations of the Treasurer? Not seeing or hearing any, I would just like to add something about the Kiwanis Club donation. All totaled, the club supplied 828 boxes of crayons and 1,728 dry erase markers, and that project was funded not only by the club in general, but also some private donors kicked in. George Prock and Dave Dillon, who has a history with the District, who actually made the donation on behalf of his late, late wife, Pat. And Diane Plogger and Ken Nuziel are also very instrumental in making sure that that donation could be made. So just thank you to everybody who donated anything that we're recognizing tonight and at any time to the District. The District appreciates all those donations, including, of course, the donation that the Kiwanis Club made just recently. Anything else from any other Board members? Okay, Mrs. Hennessy, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mrs. Rahm?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I will turn things over to Dr. Zoller again for the recommendations of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I do have a number of recommendations related to personnel in Section 7. We have a number of changes in employment for various personnel, including resignations and retirements. Personnel beginning new employment periods for both certified and classified. We have a number of personnel recommended for approval as substitutes for both certified and classified. We have several classified personnel being recommended for changes in their steps, hours, and/or days. We also have a number of personnel, both certified and non-certified, being recommended for supplemental positions as advisors and coaches for the winter season. We're also recommending that the substitute salary rates be adjusted for various classified positions. This is due to changes in the Ohio Minimum Wage Law, which is effective January 1, 2021. All of these recommendations are in accordance with the various negotiated agreements for both certified and classified employees. I do want to just circle back and just thank both of our employees that are either retiring or resigning tonight. Certainly want to mention Teresa Stanek, who's a noon assistant at the high school. She's been with the District for 31 years. Just tremendous commitment and dedication to the District. She'll be retiring at the end of the calendar year here, December 31st. And certainly want to congratulate and wish Michael McDade, our business manager, well, who's resigning effective January 8th. Michael was or has been with the District for at least 10 years. I know he was here when I came here eight years ago. So just want to thank him and recognize the great job that he did, especially in helping to lead and marshal all of the work that was done that made our new grade six through 12 campus possible. So that was a tremendous undertaking on top of everything else that is required from that position in terms of just keeping our food service program up and running, our transportation department, all of our classified employees, custodians, maintenance workers, you know, keeping them, you know, operating efficiently and effectively. And he's done a great job, and I really want to wish him well in his new position. So at this time, I will make the recommendation that the Board approves all of those items contained in Section 7A through 7F.
Dr. Zoller, do you want to take these sections one at a time? Because we do have the ability to... I'm not aware that anything needs to be separated or pulled out. We can do 7, 8, 9, and 10 if you wish.
That's fine. Yep. Let's go ahead and keep moving on then. Sections 8, we have a number of policies that are being recommended for approval. These policies have gone through our Board Policy Committee. They are recommendations from Neola, who is our policy consultant when it comes to updating Board policies. And our legal counsel has also looked at these and is recommending approval. I'm not going to go through all of the policies, item by item. You see them listed there on the agenda. There are a number of them. So I do recommend the Board approves all of those policies to keep us in compliance with the various changes in state law and administrative codes. We have one student being recommended for high school graduation that has met that criteria in Section 9, and we have a number of operational recommendations in Section 10 concerning various agreements and contracts with the Board of Education. There's a recommendation to approve the agreement with the Educational Alternative Transportation for transportation services for students for 2020, 2021 school year, recommending approving an addendum to the contract with North Coast Therapy Associates for services for the 2020, 2021 school year, recommending approval of a five-year lease agreement with the Wide Open West for services for the North Olmsted City Schools, recommending the approval of a three-year renewal contract for AT&amp;T for services rendered for the District, also recommending we approve funds for... from the Ohio Department of Education School Bus Program for reimbursements, and finally recommending that we approve all of these recommendations from the Superintendent at this time. So with that, I will make the recommendation at this time that the Board does approve all of those items contained in Section 7A through Section 10F.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Zoller. Is there a motion to approve the items found under the recommendations of the Superintendent contained in Section 7 through 10?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mr. Hall. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Herbster. Thank you. Again, we are still working within the consent agenda. The Board did have this information ahead of tonight. I will say that if there is ever any item that needs to be or should be separated for any reason, we have the ability to do that. But since there is not, that's why we're taking into consideration with this vote, Items 7 through 10. Any discussion? Questions? Comments for Dr. Zoller? Okay, not hearing any. Mrs. Hennessy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mrs. Rahm?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all, and thank you, Dr. Zoller. We're going to stay with you now for additional items from the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Just a couple things tonight. I do want to kind of, again, circle back and thank and recognize our local Kiwanis chapter. In addition to the donation that they made of the crayons and various supplies, they've been working with our North Olmsted Teachers Care Fund and helping to provide supplies and other necessities to families to our District during the holiday season. So this includes Thanksgiving feasts provided for 17 families, gave prepared home-cooked... Gave prepared home cooked meals to twenty seven adults, forty students, and three toddlers. Also, they've helped provide coats, hoodies, scarves, gloves, hats, stockings, stuffed animals. Those things of that nature were provided to seventy five of our students. And then some necessities such as air mattresses, blankets, pillows. Were also purchased for some of our families in need so that they have something to sleep on. So I really want to thank the Kiwanis for their their continued community service. And also just recognize that in addition to those efforts on behalf of the Kiwanis. We did have a number of our staff members that have donated items anonymously to families, including things like toys and books. And shoes, additional coats and other items that were needed to support our family. So just really proud of our staff and in our local Kiwanis Community Service Group for the continued goodwill. And and gestures of of really sacrifice and just giving. On their behalf for the benefit of the community. So thanks to all of those who have participated in those community service efforts. The district continues to work through COVID, all of the, you know. Situations that have been impacted by COVID regarding our our various learning plans. And we continue to monitor our COVID. You know, impacts on our COVID dashboard that's located up on the district website. I I continue to update the board in terms of where we are on that. And again, we're working with the county as well as our local COVID coordinator here in the district. To try to make sure that we, you know, emphasize safety and make sure that everybody is is as safe as they can be. As we as we work our way through, you know. All of the challenges that COVID has provided. In looking at second semester. You know, we're in our last week before the holiday break this week, so things are, you know, we're finishing up what we can right now. We'll come back after the holiday break. And we've got about three weeks before we finish up our our first semester. But as we look to transition and plan ahead for second semester, we have. Given our our parents and students once again the opportunity to. Make a choice regarding what type of program or plan that they want to be on for their child for second semester. So we made that available. We have had a number of parents and students that have selected. To make a change in that process. Presently, we have seven hundred and thirty five students in our online virtual academy. We had eighty nine students that requested to move from the online academy back to our Plan One, Two, or Three. Schedule. So eighty nine students as at this time will come out of the online academy and move back into our regular school plan. We also had about a hundred and twenty eight students that have elected to move from the plan program, the Plan One, Two, or Three. Into the online academy for the duration of second semester. So that shakes out to about a net difference of thirty nine students. So we think that 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 that's a number that we will be able to handle. Pretty readily as we again look to. Create schedules and educational programs for those various students. And I I really want to thank our, you know, our principals, our teachers, our central office team. Dr. Pyros and and everybody involved who has really been leading this effort to help facilitate. The creation of all of these various schedules. So this has been a very challenging year for the district, as you can imagine. Our guidance counselors at all of our various grade levels and buildings have have had to work very hard to create schedules. You know, individual schedules for all of these students. And as as students move in and out of these various programs, you know, we continue to do that. So this year it's, you know, scheduling is a process that when things are normal, usually begins in January. And you work through that all through the spring, all the way up to August of the of the next school year. And there's constantly changes, kids, you know, students moving into the district, students moving out of the district. It's a it's a huge undertaking. So to be doing this, it's like we're constantly scheduling. And so I really want to just recognize our staff, our teachers that are getting new students in, having students leave, you know, mid-year. This all creates quite a, you know, a disruption and a challenge for everybody. So thank you to all of those, you know, professionals that are are working through this, really so that that our students have the best opportunity. To be successful in making a choice that they want, which is going to work out best for their own family situation. So thank you to everybody involved in making that a reality for our students. In terms of updating the board with regards to where we are with our Chromebook order. As as you know, as everyone knows, we've not received the full shipment of our Chromebook order since it was placed last spring. We continue to. To be in communication with our provider, the providers that are in the process of acquiring those Chromebooks for us. They're not here yet. We believe they are en route at this time. That they are in the process of being shipped here, but they've, to our knowledge, we've not been able to get a date in terms of when that ship will become available. I do have some good news that I did report to the board that we were able to secure six hundred Chromebooks from a different vendor. That. We received information this week that will be in Columbus by the end of the week. So we will be able to have those Chromebooks in the district. Over the holiday break. Which will allow us the ability to get them set up for students to be ready to go once we come back to school after the holiday break. So this will take a tremendous amount of pressure off of of our current technology supply. With respect to Chromebooks and be able to provide Chromebooks for those families and students that maybe are using a personal device right now. This will take care of a couple of different grade levels effectively. So we're very happy and I want to thank Michael McDade and Anthony Giannetti. For being able to locate those Chromebooks and. Mrs. Hennes was very helpful in terms of us getting a purchase order on very short order around so that we could get the order placed and and get those Chromebooks in. So thank you to all of those staff members that have been involved in that transaction as well. Finally, I I did share with the board that we are close to being finished with the the new pavilion project. Which will be. The last project. That is part of our six twelve campus construction. Most of the the pavilion has been completed. With the weather changing, I know they didn't get entirely everything done that they would like to have gotten done. So they'll most likely be putting some things on on hold and coming back this spring to to finish up some of the final touches like staining. You know, the cedar and and some things like that. So it's very close to being done. And I am excited about being able to kind of unveil that and cut the ribbon on that for the community this spring. Because I think it's going to be a very nice venue for for both our our students. And those programs in the district that could could access that area as well as for the community to be able to use during some of those events as well. So excited to to kind of bring that project to completion as well. Lastly, I I will just let the the board know once again that. We're in the process of posting the business manager position with with Mr. McDade's resignation. We're posting it as an interim position for the time being in looking at some possibilities of how we can get through this school year, maybe with an interim. Kind of a vacancy fill. And then look towards more of a permanent solution for the next school year as we kind of work our way into the spring. But that's the status of that situation at the moment. So that's really what I wanted to share tonight. So I'll stop with that and turn it back over to you, Mr. Garden.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zoller. By the way, I just also want to thank Mr. McDade for all his contributions. While he was a part of the district. I did send him a note directly, but just publicly I wanted to say thank. Thank you to Michael McDade and and the other folks who we approved resignations for this evening for all their contributions to the district. They were significant and appreciated.
Absolutely.
So. Does anybody, anyone else have any follow up for Dr. Zoller on additional items? Okay, thank you again, Dr. Zoller. Moving into the Board of Education Committee reports, I will first turn to Mrs. Murphy to see if you have a report for us this evening.
No report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hall, it's time for you to unmute and let us know if you have anything this evening.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Herbster?
Just a few things for Polaris. We have decided to go back totally virtual as a board. They are working with as many students as they can to do the hands-on in person. The the number of cases we've had over there are very low with the students and the staff. So they've been able to distance them far enough to 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 keep any. Massive closures to be their program or the whole school down. And they're looking to see what goes on over the the break. And, you know, as of right now, they plan to continue the the services the way they are. But there is a possibility that if over the Christmas break, a lot of students become infected, we may have to go and change some of all our our programs. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herbster. Mrs. Ron, do you have a a report for us this evening?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. So it has been. As far as my legislative update, it has been a very active lame duck session in Columbus this year. In fact, I I believe. Since I have been the legislative liaison, this has been the most active lame duck season that I have seen. A lot of things have been. Pushed forward. So knowing that this report could have been very lengthy, I went ahead and emailed the report to all of the board members ahead of time. So that you would have a chance just to read the activity that we have been involved in. And let me know if if you didn't receive that or if you have any questions. But I just want to hit a few highlights of the legislative update that I sent out. The Fair School Funding Plan is right now stuck. It was, the Fair School Funding Plan was approved by the House under House Bill three oh five. Seen a couple of different vote tallies. The first was eighty seven to nine, but I believe the last I saw it passed eighty seven to eight. Needless to say, it passed pretty easily. However, as of today. The Senate, it's stuck in the Senate Finance Committee. They have not moved it out of its committee so that the full Senate could consider the Fair School Funding Plan. It's my, it's pretty apparent that there are no plans to move this forward at this time. I sent the board a couple of pieces of testimony that I supplied to a couple of different committees regarding House Bill seventy five and Senate Bill ninety five. These pieces of legislation would make it more cumbersome, more cumbersome and problematic for public school districts to challenge property valuations. I have, I do not have an update on those pieces of legislation. The last one that the the last big one that I sent the board some information on is House Bill thirty eight. House Bill thirty eight. Could have significant, could have a significant financial impact. Not only on public school districts, but on local governments. If that legislation passes. And and that is according to the Legislative Service Commission, who reviews and analyzes different pieces of legislation. And that was their determination that if that piece of legislation would pass, it could have some significant repercussions for local school districts and local governments. The only thing, the only other thing I'm going to add. To these items or to the report that I supplied to everybody is. In 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 retrospect, I was a little struck by the fact. That, oh, and by the way, as far as House Bill thirty eight goes. The Senate did not have a session today, so they have not voted. They may vote on the floor on this bill tomorrow. And I can keep you updated. It it struck me that. House Bill thirty eight includes provisions from another piece of legislation, House Bill seventy one. That were included into House Bill thirty eight. In a Senate committee. After having only two hearings. Those provisions received a hearing from the sponsors of the bill and the proponents of the bill. But those provisions from seven fifty one that are now part of thirty eight never heard any opposition testimony. And I find that troubling. That that could be rushed through the way it's being rushed through. While concurrently. After three years of work. Numbers of sessions, a number of feedback over three years on the Fair School Funding Plan. The Senate is saying they need more time to consider it. I I just. I I just think that that is interesting to me and and unfortunate. That sometimes we have pieces of legislation that. Moved through with very little consideration. We saw vouchers, we saw voucher laws change changed and expanded during this lame duck session. Almost overnight and going back a few years now. Literally within a twenty four hour window. The General Assembly changed laws so that the state could take over the Youngstown City School District. And I I just, I think that this is something that. It's unfortunate, and I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. So I don't know if anybody had any questions about the report or. Let me, please let me know if you didn't receive it and I will make sure that you get it. Okay. I'm not hearing anything, so we're going to keep moving on to the next item of business. You would give me just one moment. The next item of business is under unfinished business of the Board of Education. Everyone should have received a document for consideration called the North Olmsted City Schools Board of Education Operating Protocol. This was sent out to everyone originally, but there have been some suggested changes to a document that hopefully we as a board can agree on as the way that we are going to operate. I think this is very timely as we wrap up two thousand twenty and are heading into a brand new year that perhaps we can come to an agreement on this operating protocol as we start a brand new year. We do not have to approve this as it is written tonight, but I would ask if anybody wants wants to go ahead and make a motion to approve it with the changes that are before you. If not, then we can take this up in January. So any questions, comments, discussions, or motions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Herbster?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the the document and vote on it tonight.
Okay, thank you. The motion has been made to approve the Board Operating Protocol document as it is currently written with the changes, and I would ask if there is a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. I will ask again if there is any discussion. Not not hearing any. Mrs. Hennessy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mrs. Rom?
Yes.
Mr. Groden?
Yes, thank you all. We'll get this document cleaned up and looking good, and we'll send it back out to everyone as soon as we get that done. So thank you. That brings us to item twelve C under new business. We have a proposed resolution. This is a resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional eight point five mil tax for the purpose of current expenses and requesting the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer to certify the total current tax valuation of the school district and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that additional levy pursuant to sections five seven zero five zero three and five seven zero five point two one of the revised code. Before going any further, just want to make sure that it is completely understood by everyone here and anyone and anyone who might be following the meeting as as we are moving through this agenda item that this resolution does not commit the district to anything at this point. This resolution would be, if it is passed, would be giving the treasurer the go ahead to certify everything with the county fiscal officer. Mrs. Hennessy, I don't know if you want to add anything or if if that's all that we really need to say regarding the resolution before we take it up.
Your description is accurate of of what this process is. Tonight is just allowing me to get the certification from the county auditor, the second resolution that you have to pass prior to February third would put the issue on the ballot.
Okay.
Tonight, you need three members to pass the resolution. The second resolution, you need four board members to pass it.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hennessy. So the next step, and again, as as we just stated, this is just a resolution so that the so that Mrs. Hennessy can get the millage certified. I would ask if there is a a motion to approve the resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional eight point five mil tax for the purpose of current expenses and requesting the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer to certify the total current tax valuation of the school district and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that additional levy pursuant to sections fifty seven oh five point oh three and fifty seven oh five point two one of the revised code.
So moved.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Murphy. Is there a second?
Thank you.
And seconded by Mr. Herbster. Thank you both. Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, not hearing any or seeing any. Mrs. Hennessy, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rom?
Yes.
Mr. Groden?
Yes. Thank you all. That resolution has passed. So in January, we will look at the next step in this process. Okay. Next, next, we need to do a couple of things regarding the organizational meeting in January. We need to set a date for the organizational meeting, and we also need to appoint someone to act as president pro tem for the opening of that meeting. So if you could have your calendars out and ready. This meeting, I think everybody knows, but just to make sure that it's clear, this meeting must happen before January fifteenth. So I know we've like, we usually plan on Thursday work sessions. So the first date I would maybe suggest is Thursday, January seventh.
That works for me, if it works for everyone else.
Mrs. Hennessy, Dr. Zoller, how does that date look for you? Okay. What what time would you like to start? We can, we can start, we could probably start earlier than seven if you wish. Probably going to be about a seven hour meeting. Six?
That'd be great.
Six works for me.
Tom? Okay. Dr. Zoller, Mrs. Hennessy, is six P M. Okay? Okay. So we we will, Dr. Pyros, does that work for you? Okay, we will set the organizational meeting then for Thursday, January seventh at six P M. And now we need to designate or elect someone to serve as president pro tem for the opening of the meeting. Do we have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Cameron.
Okay. We, you, you did a very good job at the two thousand twenty organizational meeting as president pro tem.
I did do that. You're right.
Any other nominations? Okay. So there is a motion or a nomination for Mrs. Rom to serve as president pro tem for the organizational meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any. Mrs. Hennessy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mrs. Rom?
Epstein.
Mr. Groden?
Yes. Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Rom, for being willing to do that. I am not aware of any other new business to come before the board. Before I ask if there is any correspondence to the board, I just want to mention that we are coming up on the next opportunity for public participation. And this would be public participation regarding matters that are not on tonight's agenda. And again, those questions or comments can be submitted to the inbox, which is questions at nolstead.org. I will look around the room to see if anybody else has anything. Mr. Hall?
I do not.
Okay.
Mr. Groden, I don't have any correspondence, but I just have a question about the organizational meeting.
Yes.
Are we only having an organizational meeting, or will there be any kind of other action at that meeting, just so we know how to politicize it? Typically, at work sessions, we do not have. Do you want to let me know?
Yeah, I want to I just want to take a look at
Okay.
what the or what the structure of the organizational meeting was this year. So I'm not missing anything.
Good.
And leave open the opportunity that there might be something we want to take to a vote.
Okay. All right.
So yeah, I'll get back to you on that.
Don't we generally decide our meetings for the year?
We do. We'll set the meeting calendar. We will obviously, we'll select board president and committee assignments at that meeting.
Those are all functions of the organizational meeting. It would be if if you need to take any formal action that's outside of the organizational meeting, like if you wanted to approve the second resolution or because you don't have another board meeting until the end of January. So I'm just double checking.
Yeah, so since we still, since we still have some time, I'll confirm everything with you or we'll we'll get that squared away. Thank you. Okay. We do have a couple emails in the inbox at this time. The first is from Paula Marquardt, who is asking what are the total number of reported COVID cases for teachers and students in North Olmsted up to date? And I I can go ahead and take this one, but Dr. Zoller, hop in if I misstate anything, but that information is available on the district website. If you go to the homepage and under this center section under the headline where it says latest news, it may not appear when the site opens, but there is a scroll bar, and if you scroll down, you will see something that says COVID nineteen dashboard. And that is where just click on the COVID nineteen dashboard, follow the link, and you will be able to find that data. Anything? How often is that updated, Dr. Zoller?
It's updated weekly generally on Wednesdays of of the of the given week, so it is a rather dynamic and fluid dashboard. But yes, we report that information to the state of Ohio and update the dashboard on a weekly basis.
Okay. Okay, thank you, and thank you for the question. We have another question from Jacqueline Beata Meyer. She writes, good evening. I heard there will be some thirty, I heard there will be thirty some new online academy students. I believe I heard thirty nine. How many are fourth graders? They are already have thirty in their class. How many are first and second graders? First and second grade is currently combined. So that could also quickly turn into a very large class. I really hope these things are being taken into consideration. Will you be hiring new online academy staff to prevent large class sizes? Dr. Zoller, I don't know if you want to address this this question right now. But by the way, all of the questions and comments that are submitted to this email address are are archived so that the administration can follow up with people who submit something at any time. But Dr. Zoller, did did you want to say anything here?
Yeah, I think we could, we could give a response. Generally, I know Dr. Pyros is on the meeting call here, and she is the one who has been facilitating our online virtual academy, and I believe she might have some information that she can share. So, Dr. Pyros, if you'd like to unmute yourself and respond to this.
Thank you, Dr. Zoller. With specifically to fourth grade, we actually have requests from families, more families requesting to make a change from the online academy into plan than we do from plan into our fourth grade. So for fourth grade in particular, our online academy numbers will actually be smaller than they are currently for second semester at this point, and that is the a similar situation for our students in grades, you know, kindergarten through fifth grade in particular. The requests of either to move from online to plan or planned online really are almost what we would call a wash. They're almost canceling one another out so that the class sizes will be nearly the same. But there will not be any significant increases at all to any of our classes in grades one through five into the online academy. And 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 same for students transferring into the plan as well. The class sizes will remain what we would hope for them to be. So that's what our data is looking at at this point in time with the information that we have from our families.
Thank you, Dr. Pyros.
Okay, thank you both, and thank you for the question. I'll double check to see if there are any other questions at this time, and there are not. I am not aware of any need for an executive session this evening, but I will look around the room to make sure I'm not missing anything. Looking at my Zoom panel. Okay. So there not being a need for an executive session, I would ask if there is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Rom. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Before we adjourn, I would like Mr. President, before we adjourn, I would like to extend a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to the rest of the board and anybody that's watching online.
Thank you, Mr. Herbster. I would, I will second that motion, but thank you very much. Yes, I too would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, joyous holiday season, and a, and a happy and safe new year. So we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Anything else? Mrs. Hennessy, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Rom?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes, and we, the final meeting of two thousand twenty is adjourned.